Hi Tessa, how are you? Nice to see you. May I also have me see? This is you and I, huh? Donna McNichol is arriving, Herb Gilmore is arriving, that's good. Hi Donna, unmute yourself.
How are you?
Good, nice to see you Donna. Herb, you can unmute yourself if you want to. Since we only have two minutes. Hi Herb.
Hey.
How are you? We have Karen Keegan, Keegan. Okay. James Attorney Martin is coming in. Good evening, Counsel, how are you?
Just unmute.
Unmute yourself. I don't know what that is.
Hi there.
Hi Megan, how are you?
Great, how are you?
Good, very good. Okay. We're waiting to get quorum. We, we're still a minute early anyway. There's Andy Berg, I see him coming in, hi Andy.
Hello everybody.
Hi Andy.
Good evening Andy. Alright, we do have quorum, but, but we don't have, we have 6:59, so we cannot officially start this meeting yet. But we have quorum, I, I see we have Town Council here, I see we have Counsel, James Martin for the applicants. Kate.
Yeah, would Katie give their last name for the minutes?
Yeah, Kate and Karen, if you could unmute yourself so that we can have a conversation, but we do need your last names for the minutes, I don't know if Karen Keegan is Karen Keegan, but we should get that information. And Kate, we have no idea about your last name. So you should unmute yourselves.
Yeah, hi there, Katie, you got last name C as in Charlie, E as in Echo, R O W, C E R O W, Cerro.
Thank you.
And Karen Keegan.
Thank you.
Sure.
Someone calling me? Okay. Andy, do you wanna verify the time?
The time as I see it is now 7:00 PM.
Okay. Well, I'm looking at the agenda in front of me. First item is my call to order, so I call this meeting to order, we have quorum. And I mentioned already some of the participants, I understand that Alan Hughes Clerk, Tessa will be recording who they are here. Tessa, may I call on you now to perform the clerk's reading?
Yes. Following the governor's restrictions on public meetings, this meeting is being held virtually using zoom.com for remote participation only. The public may access it following the instructions on this meeting's agenda posted on the town calendar. If despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide real-time access, the public can request the recording of this meeting by contacting the town clerk.
Okay. Thank you, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the ZB A meeting minutes of February 18th, 2021, but I have tabled that. Unless there's an objection, the reason I'm tabling that, and I, I know we have other minutes also available, is because Jeff Lacy's not here and, you know, I think he should, we should give him the courtesy of being here, so unless there's some, anyone, you know, including the other attorneys that are here or other board members see any reason not to table that, I think, it's my understanding that as long as it's approved on the third meeting subsequent to when they occurred, we have a January, the January 1, the next meeting will be the third meeting, so we'll certainly look at the minutes, the January meeting minutes, and this one is quite premature. Any objections about tabling this? Any problem, anybody foresee? I'm seeing nauseous, Andy, you say no, right?
I, I see no objections, I think, you know, there were some minor technical details that Jeff wanted to correct, and I, I also agree that he, he should, you know, yes, be able to.
He has no intention of arriving tonight, so Herb, do you feel the same way?
I do.
Okay, alright, so we're gonna take officially a table those meeting minutes, so please, Tessa, remind us, whenever the next meeting occurs, that January meeting is must the third meeting, that will be the third meeting, and I understand that that's what's required under the open meeting law, so we can go to item number four, which is the public hearing continuation for a special permit regarding the application of Stephen and Megan M. for reconstruction of a house of 32 Lake Drive. And this is case number 20-002. I trust Herb and Andy that you received an email from me with an attachment, which was the proposed draft special permit. Is that a yes?
So I've received an email from you, but it did not contain an attachment, it was the reply to Attorney Martin's email, but I didn't have the initial, it didn't have, I think, the initial attachment. Is there any way you could forward that along, and I can read it in a jiffy?
Sure, yeah, we can try to do that, but James, are you gonna, are you gonna put this on the board, are you gonna, Tessa, can he do that, do you have this?
Yes, I've enabled it so that Attorney Martin should be able to screen share if he's
Well, I would, I'm more than willing to share.
Sorry Jim.
Alright, alright, let me, let me, let me see if I can find it, Andy, and let me find it.
Well, or if anybody's got it and they could forward it to me, I'd be happy to put it on the screen myself.
I think I have it right here. And I'm forwarding you, right now, it's coming here. I see the attachment, Andy, can you just dictate your, wait a minute, I think I have it right here, hold on. No, I don't, just tell me, give me an email, Andy.
Sure, Andy, A N D Y dot S as in Scott, dot Berg, B E R G, at gmail dot com.
Dot S as in Scott, okay, Andy dot S, then what?
Dot Berg, B E R G.
Dot Berg, B E R G.
At gmail dot com.
Gmail dot com, okay, hold on, there it is, I see you there, okay.
Just, just for the record, I also got Herb Gilmore, just for the record, I also got the email with no attachment.
Alright, then I am gonna send that to you right now. Herb, can I have your email, H G, right?
H G I L M O R E.
Four six six eight?
Four six six eight.
Okay, and I'm gonna just.
At gmail dot com.
Yeah, I have it, and I'm going to just, everybody else has it, right? Okay, I'm gonna just.
Chuck, if Tessa has it, she could probably put it on the screen.
No, it was the same, I just checked, it's the same situation.
Well, I can, can I send it to you, or you won't be able to get it? Can I send it to the ZB A?
Yes, you can send it to ZB A also.
Okay, alright, ZB A, here it comes, alright, here it is.
It would still be helpful if, if Andy was willing to share it, so that I can continue with the minutes.
Okay, let me, let me send it now, it's coming now. And it's sent. And if I go back to my inbox, let's see if I'm gonna get it or not, we'll see, I'll close mine, see, you can stop checking Andy and Herb to see if you have it, or Tessa.
I've got it, and I'll put it up on the screen in just a moment here, if you'll bear with me for one second.
Yep, it came back to me, so I have it as well.
I got it as well, but I think it would be best if we could see it on the big screen, I think that's useful.
Yeah, I just wanna remind everybody that the law essentially says that there's no problem with the applicant drafting the decision, but if the applicant drafts the decision, it's incumbent upon the board to literally go through it line by line and adopt it as their own, so
Oh yeah.
Really need to review it carefully.
Thank you Donna, that's appreciated, and we certainly will do that. Okay, so we have one on the board. And depending upon what you can read better, let's go through it, exactly as Donna said, line by line, we have the names of the applicants, and I'll call upon counsel for the applicants to let me know if there's any spelling errors there. And we have the case number right under that, 20-002, I know that that is the case number, we have the decision date, which was March 3rd, 2021, that is today. And the current property owners again, Stephen C. M. and Reagan and Megan M.
Thank you.
Megan, right? Megan?
Correct.
Okay, and then we have the property address, which is 32 Lake Drive, comma Schutzbury, comma Massachusetts, 01072, that appears to be correct. Registry of deeds title preference, you know, it appears to be correct, book 7385, and the page 233. And if anybody sees any errors, let me know about that. Okay, then we're going down to the hearing date. We have the hearing date initially heard on September the 30th, 2020. And continued through March 3rd, 2021, and I do note for the record, it doesn't have to be here, but it was at least once every single month, September, October, November, December, January, February, and now March. Just, just to put that in there, I don't mean to say that that has to be there. The request. Requesting a special permit pursuant to zoning bylaws, section 6.1-3, capital C, to rebuild the pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling at 32 Lake Drive on the existing footprint in compliance with, and I'm gonna ask for a change here, but, but let's see what it, what it says originally. In compliance with the currently required setbacks to colon A, increase the height of the structure from 21.5 feet to 26.5 feet, and B, add a 20-foot wide by 8-foot deep porch on the lakefront side of the structure. Of structure, it says. Add a the, would be a friendly amendment if you wanted to do that, which is permitted by right under the zoning bylaws. Now, before I leave that, I just want to suggest either striking one, two, three, four words, or just striking it in period, or substituting, the four words that I think should be stricken are where it says dwelling at 32 Lake Drive on the existing footprint in compliance with the then currently required setbacks. I think those words currently required setbacks should be stricken, and the reason I think so is if you look further down in the findings, finding number one, you will see the pre-existing structure of 32 Lake Drive is non-conforming because it does not meet the existing lot size, frontage and side setback, so I think it's best to, since it doesn't meet the side setbacks, I think we should strike the currently required setbacks, I do not want a situation where this could be a Rain Man back to us to correct the error. Jim, what do you think about that, and board members especially, what do you think about that? And if Town Council wants to comment on that, again, striking the words with the current required setbacks, any comments by board members or Jim?
Let me, if you don't mind, I'll start it and see if the, if the, the text of it is not clear enough, but what the intention is, is it's, this is their request for a special permit to rebuild the pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling at 32 Lake Drive on the existing footprint in compliance with currently required setbacks. That they are staying on the current setbacks that are non-conforming, so if you want them, that's what the intention.
Okay, okay, I don't have, I don't have any objection, again, I wanna know what each member of the board thinks, I don't, and I wanna know what Donna McNichol thinks too. I don't have any objection if we change it to the currently required, non-conforming setbacks, I have no problem with that.
But it's not.
Go ahead.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not, it's not in compliance.
Okay, so why don't we?
So I, and I don't know whether that was the language in the special permit application. So I, but I think it's clear that it's not in compliance with the currently required setbacks, which are 15 feet on the side lot, and this is not. So I think that if we just get rid of in compliance with the currently required setbacks, then in fact, it just doesn't, it's not inconsistent with the first, the number one fine statement.
That we have.
And I just think it makes more consistency in the decision.
We're happy to, as the joint author, I'm happy to strike that.
Okay, and Andy Berg and Herb Gilmore, do you have any objection to striking that language, it seems that we should do that?
Here it is, I struck it before I even agreed, but I, I think that's a good thing, I like sort of getting rid of, from in compliance, I like getting rid of in compliance with the currently required setbacks, because it is on the existing footprint, and the rest of the request remains the same.
Okay, and Herb Gilmore, can you make any statements about your feelings about this?
No, I totally agree, I think that keeping in compliance with the currently required setbacks is just not true.
Okay.
Right, it's not a true statement, because it's not in compliance with the currently required setbacks.
Okay.
So, you know, and I think we all agree on that, we all agree that it's presently not in compliance to the setbacks.
Okay, so, so, we'll let, we'll let you, can you strike that then, because the entire board is unanimous about that?
Could you let Karen in, please, she got booted. Sorry.
No, thank you, I was focusing on the paper and I didn't see that.
I figured, thank you very much, I wish we had the chat active in these things.
Okay, alright, so we're.
Chuck, where was the friendly amendment you wanted?
Well, the only other, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with, as everyone already agrees, striking in compliance with the current, oh, oh, the friendly amendment, I wanted to add the word the, it's just a grammatical thing, but I could be wrong about that too, let me, let me go back to it, requesting a special permit pursuant to zoning bylaws, section 6.1-3C, to rebuild the pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling at 32 Lake Drive on the existing footprint in compliance with, wait a minute, I think it's further down, when we get there, I'll go, I'll see it, it's not there, not yet, I know I read it earlier, but it's further down, I think.
Okay.
Alright, so we'll, so we're gonna strike that, and we're gonna, we'll see. The A will still say increase the height of the structure from 21.5 feet to 26.5 feet, and add a 20-foot wide by 20, by 8-foot deep porch on the lakefront side of, and here's the friendly amendment, of the structure. See, do you see that Jim, of the structure, not of, I think of structures, this is slightly clumsy as English, but I don't.
We have no objection to that.
Okay, so that's the friendly amendment, and the lakefront side of the structure, adding the word the, which is permitted by right under the zoning bylaws, this proposal, next paragraph, this proposal will increase the neighborhood, will improve the neighborhood by rebuilding the existing dwelling that is located on the property, which has been neglected for many years. The property owners have been part of the lake community for generations, and intend to improve the neighborhood with this project while complying with the zoning bylaws. Okay, so far, so good, everybody, we have a friendly amendment, and we have a, a striking some words, are we all set so far? Talking to my fellow board members?
I feel good so far, sorry Herb.
Okay, and Herb, Andy says he's good, Herb, are you good?
I feel good, I guess I'm just looking at the last sentence, the property owners have been a part of the lake community for generations, intend to improve the neighborhood with this project while complying with the zoning bylaws.
Okay.
Isn't that what we are trying to determine by the special permit?
Well, yes, this is the request part of it, that's the request they're making, you know.
Okay. So I mean, you know, the special permit is being requested because they're not complying with the zoning bylaws. No, well, no, not, I mean, first of all, if you don't mind, this is the request that they submitted a long time ago, we're just, right, this point. The second thing is that they are going to comply with the zoning bylaws and have, by coming before this board to get a special permit in order to, because it's a non-conforming, so they are complying with the bylaws that require them. I just wanted a clarification on what was meant by complying with the zoning bylaws, if they're complying by requesting a permit, yes.
Yes, yes, and they're going through the required process, I think that's.
Okay.
Okay, so, so far we're on agreement, you know, including that one strike, and the, and the, and the friendly amendment adding the word the, now the plans, see plan entitled Great Pines, Lake Wyola, Schutzbury, Mass. Dated July 28th, 1937, and recorded with the Franklin County Registry of Deeds and Plan Book 11, comma, page 50. Plot plan none, building plan, site plan for 32 Lake Drive, Schutzbury, Massachusetts, dated 5/7/2020, and prepared by Jeff LeBeau, comma, P E. Okay, so I think that's just all, you know, language that we always have in terms of setting the booking page and and the, and the building plans, so the first finding. Now, finding number one is that the pre-existing structure at 32 Lake Drive is non-conforming because it does not meet the existing lot size, frontage, and side setback requirements, so, so I'm good with that, and Herb, are you good with that, and Andy, are you good with that, and please state your name, you know, at least your first name, so that Tessa could record it, whether or not you're good with that first sentence.
Herb Gilmore is good with that first sentence.
And Andy Berg is good with that first sentence as well, the first finding.
Alright, finding number two, the project proposes reconstruction, extension, structural change, major exterior alteration, or expansion of non-conforming structures where an increase in height is proposed. Chuck Damari is good with that sentence, Herb Gilmore and Andy Berg, please say whether or not you are.
Herb Gilmore is good with that sentence.
Andy Berg also likes that finding.
Okay. Third finding. Section 6.1-3 of the town of Schutzbury zoning bylaw determines that reconstruction, extension, structural change, major exterior alteration, or expansion of non-conforming structures where an increase in height is proposed constitutes an increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure, and as such requires a special permit finding under section 6.1-3, comma, C, of the bylaw. The board finds that the requested height of the structure at 26.5 feet is within the currently allowed height of 28 feet permitted by the bylaws, and thus does not increase the non-conformity of the structure, nor does it make the structure substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I'm good with that, the only thing I throw out there is whether or not it might be prudent before the word neighborhood to add the word existing neighborhood, to the existing neighborhood. But, you know, let me hear from you, Andy Berg, and Herb Gilmore, how you feel, how you feel about finding number three, and whether or not you think my idea, adding the word existing in front of the word neighborhood makes sense or not, and whatever, it's a friendly amendment. Go ahead, either Andy Berg or Herb Gilmore.
Actually, I did just see Donna raised her, her hand, I, maybe there, Donna, did you have something you, you wanted to contribute?
Yeah, that, that finding seems inconsistent to me, looking at it this time. The first half says that an increase in the height is proposed, is proposed constitutes an increase in the non-conforming nature, and then that sentence that's highlight, highlighted says we don't find an increase in the non-conforming nature. I understand what Jim's trying to convey, but I think we need to just find some different verbiage, because I think that, that was the whole, we had a long discussion about that. The fact of the matter is that the way the zoning bylaws written essentially bumps you into the finding if they're increasing the height, and so sort of takes away from the board that finding about whether or not it increases the non-conforming nature, and I think Jim captured that exactly in the first sentence. The problem is, is then it's contradicted in the second sentence, so I don't know if we can wordsmith the second sentence to basically say that based on the language of the bylaw, while this is, is, is considered an increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure, the board finds that it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure, or something like that, because it's just, it's just internally inconsistent right now.
Oh, go ahead, sorry, Attorney Martin.
I suggest, I suggest that then, where it says finds that the height of the structure at 26.5 feet is within the currently allowed height of 28 feet permitted by the bylaws, and thus does not substantially, it does not make the, and thus the project is, or the increase in height is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and thus the increase in height is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think I'd like to put a little more depth to that finding, Jim. The board finds that the requested height of the structure at 26.5 feet is within the currently allowed height of 28 feet permitted by the bylaw. And thus the board finds that the overall proposal is not more, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure?
I mean, I'm wondering, you know, I'm sort of seeing like this next sentence here, right, you know, because this next sentence incorporates much of what we're, we're saying here, you know?
Right.
And so I'm wondering, I mean, does, does that sentence need to be there?
Probably no.
I think it's important to put in that the 20, the 26.5 feet is within the bylaw.
Yes, definitely.
Dimensions for the district, so I think that part of that sentence is important, whether or not the remainder of it, I think you might be right, Andy, that may be what, just deleting it works. The board finds that the requested height of the structure at 26.5 feet is within the currently allowed height of 28 feet permitted by the bylaw for the zoning district.
I'm good with that, Andy?
I, I like it, you know, and I think, because I think a lot of the, 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 sort of the subparts of the, the, the fourth finding go on to, you know, talk about some of the other reasons why it's not substantially more detrimental, and so I, I, I think that that, you know, that that removes some of the confusion that, that could arise, and I like doing that.
Herb Gilmore, what do you say about this?
I think that's correct to do that, to me, it gets back to what I consider to be some inconsistencies in the bylaw about
Herb, have you muted or something?
I think he's reading something.
Oh, okay.
Okay, will be no higher than the highest part of the existing structure. You know, I, I think that it would have been better to say in there that it'd be no higher than the amount, than that allowed by the present bylaw. Then we wouldn't have any of this at all, if, if that sentence had been changed, that one sentence.
You mean, in the, in the bylaw you're talking about, right?
Yes, I'm just saying how fragile this, this whole thing is, and I think that it's best to stay away from stating about non-conformity in this sentence, I agree with that.
So does everyone feel comfortable then, if I take, can you all see? So does everyone feel comfortable then? If, if I take, can you all see this highlighted portion? Could just replace that with a period?
Yeah, I, I am. I am. And I do think we obviously, not for tonight, but at another time, we should definitely deal with this. Problematic drafting of this part of the bylaw. Okay.
Do you feel comfortable if I?
Yeah, I do. I do. Herb Gilmore, do you feel comfortable?
So that it would end at zoning district, period.
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Are you okay with that, Jim Tuusen, sure the applicants counsel?
We are.
Okay, excellent. All right, let's go to number four. Number four has a, a number of subparts. The, the heading of number four, in accordance with said section six point one dash three comma capital C. Period, the board finds the project is not, and the not is bolded. Substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood comma as defined. As the Lake Wyola zoning district comma than the existing nonconformist. Nonconforming structure for the following reasons. Colon, is everybody okay with that part of number four? Herb Gilmore and Andy. Berg, what do you say about that part of it? We'll go down through each one of these.
Andy Berg thinks it's fine.
Yeah, I'm just looking substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood as defined as. Sounds a little funny to me. I would say not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Comma, because the neighborhood is the thing that's being defined as the Lake Wyola zoning district. I would take that first as out, but that's just my wording.
Okay, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Yeah, take the word.
Neighborhood is defined, there's no as needed there. The neighborhood is defined as the Lake Wales.
I agree with you, Herb, that it, it does make good sense to strike the as. What do you say, Andy Berg?
Andy Berg likes that idea, and I think it was a very good amendment, Herb.
Yeah, excellence. Jim, attorney, Jim Martin, what do you say about that?
That is acceptable.
Okay, let's go to the. Down, A, the testimony from the neighbor, neighboring property owners. Were overwhelmingly positive and supportive of the project. They, what say you, Andy Berg and or. Herb Gilmore about that as stated.
Should the word be was?
Well, I think it should be testimonies were, because there were multiple testimonies.
Yes, testimonies from the neighboring property owners. Were, then the work can stay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Testimonies. From the neighboring property owners. Were overwhelmingly positive and supportive of the project. I, I, you know, I, I'm fine with that, but, but. I, I do want to remind everyone, and, and I think it's fine as, as stated, but I do want to remind everybody, but that. Not only was there testimony, a- a- as we all know, but there were also a lot of written letters, so insofar as we can. Call all those written letters as testimony, I'm okay with it. It could be testimonies and, and other evidence. From the neighboring property owners were. Testimonies from the neighboring property owners. Testimonies and other evidence from the neighboring property owners were overwhelmingly positive and supportive of the project. I mean, either way. You know, it's not just testimonies, it's other evidence.
I don't know, testimonies and letters from the neighboring property owners?
I was gonna suggest these and correspondence.
Okay, testimonies and correspondence. From the neighboring property owners were overwhelmingly positive and supportive of the project, period. Okay, I, I'm good with that. Now, what do you say, Andy Berg? And what do you say, Herb Gilmore?
Well, I would say correspondences, but that's just me.
Correspondences within the plural.
Yes.
I, I like that. What do you say, Jim Martin, about that?
That's fine.
Okay, Andy Berg, what do you say about that?
I, I like this as it is written.
Oh, okay.
I want to know if Herb was an English teacher.
No.
Well, you know, medical doctors are quite precise, especially.
There it is.
Neurology, especially those of, of neurology. Okay. Okay, so we're good with that, is that right? No objection, we're gonna go on to B. Do I hear it? Okay, B. One objection, I do have a, a, a comment here, but let me read it as it states. One objection was voiced regarding the increase in height. But the objection did not substantiate that the increase would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Based on the site visits performed by the members of the ZBA. Now, can, can I, I would, I would like to add what I think is a friendly amendment and, and makes it fuller. I would just say one significant objection, the word significant objection. So we know, you know, and I, and I, and I put the word significant in there because obviously. It was that particular significant objection that we, was, of the focus of. Meeting after meeting after meeting and debate after debate after debate. So I don't know if you all you feel about that word significant adding, adding in there. Anybody here, Herb Gilmore and or Andy Berg, any comments before I move to Jim? Martin and or our town council?
I, I don't know, my, my concern about significant is that, I don't know, it gives it a, a certain. Weight of quality, I guess, that I, I don't know that I, I would want to. Apply to it, you know, I mean, so.
I think if you do that, you're now stating one significant objection means that there were other objections that we're not mentioning. That were insignificant. So I think by doing that, you kind of back yourself up to saying, okay, there were other objections. You didn't bring them up because they weren't significant.
Yeah, I mean, actually, it's how I feel about.
Takes away actually from the strength of it, but like, go ahead.
Well, I mean, I'm not, the only reason I threw that out there, and we can think about this, i- is. The, we, as part of the evidence in this case, we have the, I, I believe it if I recall correctly. The sixty seven Shore Drive decision. I think that's part of the evidence in this case. At least one page of it, and, and I, and I think if I recall, and I, I don't have it in front of me. I, I, I think when, what we wrote and what we decided in that case a couple of years ago. Is that the board sent, spent considerable amount of time, even focus. On the objection of the neighbor across the street. And I actually thought that that strengthened. The decision in, in, in generally, because again, I look at this not. Just in, insofar as it's a decision, but I, I look at it insofar as a, a trial court or, or an appellate court. Or the SJC may look at it to know that we in fact did consider this, this significant objection. To be honest with you, I think one of the other objections was not significant, it was contradictory, and that's a person who. Supported it and then objected because of some fear of someone looking in her window, which, you know, I, 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 yeah, that's what I felt about it, but. Go ahead, Donna.
What if you put something like objections were voiced? And include, or including regarding, or including the hot increase in height. Or something like that to indicate that there was more than one objection without giving either objection. Weight like Andy said, that seems to be above. What the issues were, but, but I, I agree that there was more than one objection, and this sort of looks like there was only one objection. If you add significant, then basically you have to sort of go through a whole drumroll about. It was only twenty five percent of his view of the public beach that he had a hundred percent view or. His view wasn't changed of the lake in general and a lot of other machinations in this. So I think that. If you put at least one objection was voiced, or you put objections were voiced. One in particular regarding the increase in height. Then you convey that there was more than one objection, the main objection was the increase in height. And you let, then it, and so you've been accurate about the testimony without. You know, putting in all the detail.
Let me just say one thing about that, in fairness to my memory of the, of the, of the record. Actually, no one, no one. Even the most stringent opponent of this project objected to the height, no one objected to the height. What they, what the objection was, in fact, it's on the record that these people who were objecting to the project. Were not objecting to the height, they were objecting to the dormers coming out. I mean, and they said they would go along with the project. They would go along with the project even at the height requested if there were no dormers. So I think that's a, a more accurate statement, but I, my memory. You know, so anyway, that's my. Andy Berg remembers of the evidence and what Herb Gilmore remembers of the evidence too. Because I don't think it was the height at all. I think it was the dormers.
There was a lot of discussion about the width. Of the project at that height.
Yes.
That's was the main objection. By the one person. The others. That I recall, one man objected on the basis of. Environmental concerns, concerns about septic systems that really had nothing to do with the structure, this particular structure. And the only other one that I recall was the one woman who was concerned that. With the dormers having windows, somebody might be able to look into her house. But I would agree with you, Chuck, I'm not sure that anybody objected to the height per se. But rather to the overall bulk, I think that was the term that was being used.
Yes.
The bulk of the project. And, you know, people were raising their hands up going, you know, and now it's like this, and now it'll be like this, and so they were really concerned about the bulk. I don't know how to convey that, but it bulk has, is nothing to do with our bylaws.
Right, right, right.
I still think you can use that word because that's in fact. How the objections were voiced.
Could it be, could he use like the volume of the structure or something like that?
Sure.
Yeah, because it wasn't, it really wasn't the height, and I think that's important to know.
Yeah, I think the volume of the structures is really reflects what the concern was more than just the height.
So get rid of one.
And we say objections.
Yeah. Were.
Were voiced.
Regarding. The volume, get rid of increase, yeah.
Go ahead, Andy. The change in the volume?
The increased, the increased volume of the structure, I guess.
Yeah, I think the word height shouldn't be there, but.
Yeah, I.
With the increase in the volume, it's, it's fine by me.
But these objections. The objections, okay.
Jim, Jim Martin, what do you say about this?
I don't, I, I agree with. Doctor Gilmore's summary of the, of the objections. We were trying to focus on what, what I thought was really the only one that was persistent. And, and have you recognize it, but beyond that. I don't have any trouble with the proposed language.
Okay, Andy, what do you say? Cause you're wordsmithing this, Andy.
Well, I mean, I, I, I think that this is, you know. That, that, I think the really was the dormers that seemed to be the, the concern. I think that had. Had it just been twenty, even higher. For, for the people who were willing to accept that there would be any change at all. The dormers were the things that, that seemed to be bugging them. So I, I, I like the idea of volume or bulk being there. And, you know. But, but I also want to sort of convey, you know, that, that we make a particular finding. That, that that is not the case.
Right, I, I agree, so. Do you have any language?
What do we need to say? These objections, because we're referring to specific objections now. You know, the, these objections, ones we're referring to before. And then I think. Say, you could take objections out and just put down these.
Well, you can write some objections, I mean, because the, the one before that. Testimony from the neighboring property owners were overwhelmingly positive and supportive of the project, I think that's true. You can say some objections were, were voiced.
The second objections out.
Yeah.
Comma, but these.
Andy, what do you think? Can you get something there? Because you, you have the.
Getting there.
You have the pen in hand. Let me see everybody here.
Well, they makes us, I don't know about they, it's not a person.
Okay. No, I see what you're doing.
Well, the, I'm just saying these would answer it right there, these, you're talking about objections, these. You can put objections in if you want, I'm just saying you don't need to put it in.
Some objections were voiced regarding the increased volume, but these.
You put objections to another, referring back to objections, I guess. Yeah.
But these objections.
Yeah.
Did not.
Should it say, but the board found that these objections did not substantiate that the.
But the board finds.
Right.
But the board finds. That these objections.
Objections did not substantiate that the increase would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Based on the site visits. Performed by the members of the ZBA.
I honestly, based on the site visits.
Well, if we say finds, we have to say does, or do, not did, but. But the board finds that these objections do not substantiate.
Yes.
And.
Go ahead, but I would go, go long beyond site visits, I mean, that, that's. Absolutely, our, our observations are part of the evidence, but it's, it's more than that too, it's. Site, based on the site visits and, and the, and the other evidence. And because it was photos, there was testimony, there were memorandums, there were. The correspondence, I mean, there was so much evidence in this case, really, when you think about it.
So, so the, the question I had was that I just thought th- this sentence was getting a little bit long. Could, could we maybe just like, put like this, this finding is based.
On the. Site visits and, and other evidence, that's all, or just you wanted this, you wanted to keep with the site visits? I mean, I don't care really, but.
Well, I think other evidence, because we did have other evidence. The, the, the visit was just one piece of the reason that we came to this conclusion.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, because I think they really were photos. All kinds of photos and all kinds of memories and all kinds of correspondence to support of the project. But I think other evidence. These, this finding is based on the site visits and performed by the members and other evidence. Okay, you got it. All right, perfect. All right, are we all good with this, Herb Gilmore and, and Andy Berg? We're all good with this?
Andy Berg feels good about it.
Okay, and Herb Gilmore feels good about it. Jim Wallace, what do you say? What do you say, Jim Wallace?
Jim Martin?
Jim Martin, I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't know what Jim Wallace too, but.
To the applicant.
Yeah, okay, great. All right. Okay, I, I think we're down to C, right? The, the rebuilding will result. In a number of improvements to the appearance of the property in general. And will provide the premises with an updated septic system, which will be beneficial to the neighborhood and the lake. And I don't know if you want to add something here or not. I thought it was significant, you don't have to put it here, it's, but. I, I think the removal of the hazardous trees is something that was important. But, you know, I'm not stuck on that. Andy Berg and Herb Gilmore, what do you say about C? For, for C and, and my idea about the removal of the haz- several hazardous trees?
About the rebuilding and site improvements.
Okay. Okay, the rebuilding and site improvements will result in a number. Well, then I just, we have improvements.
Benefits.
Benefits.
Okay, the rebuilding and site improvements will result in a number of benefits. To the appearance of the property in general and will provide the premises with an updated septic system, which will be. More beneficial to the neighborhood and the lake. More beneficial to the neighborhood in the lake and or. Will increase the benefits. I don't, again, we're using benefits a couple of times, so that's. Guess that's the problem. Any other suggestions?
Not an English essay, guys.
Yeah, not me either. Um. Any, any English majors here?
I mean, I'm just asking the general questions. Is this something we really even need to have in there?
Well, I, I think, I mean, I think it's a good idea to. Reemphasize and, and I don't think redundancy necessarily hurts in a situation like this, that. To be specific about some of these improvements, I mean.
Remember, I, I think the courts are really clear that. Basing these findings on specific facts. Around what you, the evidence you heard is important, so. I, I think adding additional facts like improvements to the site as well as. Improvements to the structure. Are, are material.
Yeah.
In your, in your decision making.
Yep. I mean, I, I think so. I'm just kind of thinking how they look at it. I'm keeping all the cases in the back of my mind.
I mean, yeah, I, I mean, my, my perception is, is that, you know, given. How this has gone, I, I think that the more we can add in that supports the case, the, the better.
I mean, and these things, and these things are true. We believe them to be true, that the appearance.
Absolutely.
And that the septic system, these are things that we have believed.
Yes.
From the start, yes.
Beginning, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and, and I think that, you know, a number of, you know, to be fair, and other, other town boards have felt the, the same way, that there are some real benefits to this, so um, yes.
So, I mean, you, you know, I had proposed that, you know, the removal of the, of several hazardous trees and Donna. Thought that, you know. Language having to do with just site improvements more generally, you know. You can, you can, you can say site improvements, including the removal of hazardous trees and other improvements. Or other, you know, other aesthetic improvements. And I, I think that's part of it too for me. Yeah, that, you know. I think this is a, a great improvement to the neighborhood aesthetically. I, I, I really truly believe that. You have the power.
I, I can undo with Ctrl Z at any moment, but how does that, something like that, look?
Okay, oh, all right, the, the, the building, the rebuilding, site improves and tree removal. Will result, it's not just one tree, it's what, because they already moved some, because they already had prepared it. It was several trees.
He's got tree removal, it doesn't necessarily.
You don't need to say how many trees.
Oh, okay, okay. The rebuilding, site improvements and tree removal will result in another benefits to the neighborhood and appearance of the property in general. Will provide the premises with an updated system, which will be beneficial to the neighborhood and the lake.
Yeah.
That's fine with me.
Yep.
All right.
Jim, Jim Martin. What do you feel about this? You feel okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, let's go to, uh, I, I see we have another C. So we're gonna, just notice we have two Cs, so we're gonna change the second C to a D. And, and, and now it says the increase in height, the second C says, which is now a D. The increase in height of the dwelling will not result in any neighboring property owner losing a view of the lake. Okay, I, I have no problem with that. I think that's true.
Well. It depends what you mean by losing. And what you mean by view of the lake. Uh, I would say increase in the height of the dwelling. Will not result in any. Significant. Increase. Any significant increase or any significant. Impediment or what's what I'm looking for?
Reduction.
Reduction.
Significant reduction. Or. On, on, in any neighboring property owner's view of the lake, any significant reduction. That's fine with me.
Because that's what it was all about, you know, that, yes, there will be some loss. Of view of the lake, and we can't deny that. The photographs showed that.
Yeah, if you look at the file left. There, there.
So there is a, a decrease in the view of the lake, but it's not significant because it really only encompassed about. I think I calculated about 10%.
Of the whole view that he already has.
Viewing area.
In their view of the lake, Andy?
In there, yeah. Well, you can't say a property has a view of the lake. First, people on the property have a view of the lake.
I think.
Property owner, yes, thank you.
The increase in height of the dwelling will not result in any neighboring property owner experiencing significant reduction.
Reduction.
View of the lake.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, excellent. I, I'm good with that. And you're good with that, Herb?
Well, it's my old pet peeve about singular and plural.
Okay.
Single owner. You can't say there. You can say his or her. Neighboring owners. If you want to say that.
Neighboring property owners, why don't we do that? Yeah, okay. Okay, that's good. I like that. I'm good with that. Y'all good with that, Herb?
I'm good with that.
And, 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 uh.
I, 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 this is Andy and I like it. And, and I think the reason I like it is I just, I, I, I want to, you know, have it be that there's. Make it clear that we've considered that there is a very small loss and, you know, some ancillary views. We've considered that and we've made a determination that it's not significant.
Okay, excellent. Now it does say that, I think, okay. All right, so let's go to the E. The absolute existing distances between the subject pre-existing structure and its immediate neighboring structures will not. Change following this construction of the new dwelling as the dwelling is being constructed on the same footprint. Let's say you, Andy, and let's say you, Herb, about that language.
Well, uh, yeah, I, I think it's true. It's also, it seems like a cumbersome sentence, but again, this is not an English essay.
Yep.
I, I think it's sufficient to convey our needs and our, our findings.
I think so too. Let's, let's, let's keep it just as written. Okay, the F. Uh, the structure. Merits the issuance of a special permit as the proposed structure is a single family residence. And pursuant to general laws, chapter forty eight, section six. And the Supreme Judicial Court decision in. Malata versus zoning board of appeals of Brooklyn, comma four eighty one Massachusetts. Three seventy two, two thousand nineteen meets the legal requirements for a special permit when the property is non-conforming. I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
I, I, I'm, I, I think I'm good. I, I just.
Go ahead.
I, I might need a little bit of refresher from. One of the, the, the many attorneys who are sitting in here on the, the Blata um, decision. Um, if people, if they feel comfortable with it, I feel comfortable with it. Um. But I, I don't recall. The full details of that specific case.
Chuck has it memorized.
Just to, just to, just to refresh your memory and, 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 and much of this is Donna's memorandum and, 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 and some of it in Jim's. Um, it, it, it exhaustively went through uh, master of law chapter forty eight, section six. And it's, and especially it went through the second except clause.
Okay.
And it cited approvingly uh, attorney Jim Martin's willid decision. Eleven or twelve, maybe even thirteen times. And it did not cite even once uh, an opposing, opposing uh, decision that was offered uh, earlier.
You have, you have hit me with, as long as you, once you got to the second except clause, you have refreshed my memory of what we were talking about, so we're good.
Exhaustive, and I think it's the, it's a Supreme Court case, it's two thousand nineteen, it's the most recent case. And I, and it reaffirms a whole bunch of other cases and it talks about what is and is not uh. An, an increase to nonconformity as a matter of law. And it talks about dormers and. And, and, and two-car garages and, you know, it talks about, really talks about the special protections. Of single-family, double-family houses. Well, I think it's a fair statement on it.
I, 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 I do too. Now that you've refreshed, that second except clause totally refreshed my memory of, of what we were talking about. So I, I feel. I feel excellent about it now. Thank you for um.
Yeah, and I would certainly, in a, in a trial court or an appeals court, I would have looked at this. I'd want. They'd want to be looking at this and I, I doubt very much the Supreme Court. Uh, Massachusetts is going to reverse their own decision. It's only.
I think this, I think this sentence is key. And I think it wraps it all up.
Yeah, yeah, I, I do. I think this is. I mean, I just predict that the probability is extremely high, very high. I never say a hundred percent, but it's up in the nineties somewhere. If not the high nineties, with this case. You know, in, in the statute. In the constitutions. I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think there's much doubt where this case is going to go. Uh, that's my opinion. I, I. Occasionally I'm wrong about these things, but not that often. So that's where I'm at that. I, um, if all three of us are good with it, I'm, I'm good with keeping the language.
I, I like that. Maybe we can skip the vote section just for this moment until we get to the conditions and then go on, go on the way back.
And I do have one more condition that I want to add, uh, but let's go through these first. Okay, number one, the dwelling constructed in the property shall be a single family residence. Let, let, let me actually put my. Other clause here and now, and, and I, Jim, with your permission, um.
Chuck, I just want to point out that it's really not up to the applicant's attorney to approve.
No, I'm not asking him to approve it.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm asking him uh, to refresh my.
Nicely.
I, 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 I'm asking him to refresh my recollection about a fact. That, that, that I have in my head as a true fact. And I'm not, but I'm not a hundred, I, I'm, I'm only ninety-five percent positive and I want to get a little bit more than ninety-five percent. And, and my, it's my memory. Uh, during the course of these many, many, many proceedings and, and the questioning of the applicants. That the number of bedrooms. Is not going to change. Am I, uh. You know, with your permission, either your applicant, the applicants could speak. Jim, or you can speak. I, I, I'm assuming the number of bedrooms are not changing. Is that?
Correct. Chuck, we, we have a um. To. Going through the um. Board of Health, we have a. A two-bedroom deed restriction recorded with.
Okay.
With the. Register, whatever the Franklin County.
Okay.
Uh, registry of deeds. That's the. That's our order of conditions, which has also been filed, but. I believe our, um, if we need that information, it's in the, our application, I think we called out that we also had a two-bedroom deed restriction recorded, but. Um, I guess we can dig that up, but yeah, that is correct. It was two-bedroom.
Okay, so all, all I want to add is a friendly amendment to the sentence is the dwelling constructed on the property shall be. Uh, a, a, a two-bedroom, single-family residence as, as, as it presently, as it presently exists, and no more bedrooms than two bedrooms, something like that. We, we have done this in the past many, many times, uh. Because we had a few cases where it was two bedrooms and someone tried to make it a three-bedroom and it came back to haunt us, but. But i- if you're okay with this and Jim, uh, uh, if you see this as a good friendly amendment, it's two, it's going to stay two. Is that all right with everybody here?
I just have a question about this from a legal standpoint. As soon as you state, and this is, this is not an argument, this is just a question that I had.
Yep.
As soon as you state, single-family residence, does that automatically exclude the possibility that this could be turned into a business?
Yes.
Well, I, I mean, they certainly, they have to go through a lot of hoops and a lot of changes to do that.
I just, I just want to know if that wording by law makes it defined as something that, that could never be used as a business.
Well, well.
That it will be.
The, the zoning bylaws do allow, um, you know, do allow home-based, uh, uh, home-based. Occupations. And, and, you know, so you have to go to that section of the bylaw to see what someone can do. Some of it is a matter of right. And some of it is, uh, is a matter of, uh, you have to get another special permit. It depends what you're going to run. And, and, and that question, as to the special permit, if it's going to, if it's a major. Home occupation, it has to go to the planning board. If it's something less than that, it goes to the zoning board. And some of them don't have to go anywhere. Uh, they just allow it as a matter of right. So I don't. I don't think that this uh. Condition number one speaks to the, any of that. Uh, you know, again, the law is pretty clear. In terms of uh, major home occupations. And, and special permits and, and what's allowed as a matter of right. And all of that stated pretty explicitly in the bylaw.
We don't need to add that.
I don't think, no, I don't think we have to add that because they have something. Matter of right.
My recollection was I specifically asked the mycologics.
To do what?
I had specifically asked the mycologics early on.
No.
Was this going to be a single-family home? They said yes. Uh, and was this not going to be used for business? They said no. So they've already. Answered that, but I, I wasn't sure if we needed to put that in here.
No, I don't think, I don't think so. I don't think so. Okay. Are we good with that, Andy Berg?
I, I am good with that. Straightforward and excellent.
All right, let's go to two. The final height of the subject dwelling shall be no greater than twenty-six point five feet, measured in accordance with the definition of. Quote-unquote, building height in the town of Chutesberry zoning bylaws as follows. Uh, calling the vertical d- distance measured from the highest point of the roof to the average finished grade. Elevation at the walls. I have no problem with that at all. What, go ahead.
And Andy Berg has no problem with it all, assuming that that text is correct as, as in the bylaws. I don't recall if it's exact, but I, I, I like the notion and it sounds fine.
Uh, Herb Gilmore.
I agree.
Okay. All right, so we'll keep that and we'll approve that finding. And number three. The building inspector shall assure that the grades are in conformance with the elevation plans. On the final construction plan submitted with the building permit application. Um, you know, and I would add, and, and, and. And built accordingly.
And you know, I would put the building inspector shall confirm. I don't think it's fair to put on him the onerous of assuring.
Okay, shall confirm that the grades are in conformance with the elevation plans in the final construction plan submitted. With the building permit application and will be built according to uh, those plans, something like that.
Well, I think that's the fifth condition.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so let's, let's, okay, are we all okay with that condition? The, the, the third condition then. Herb Gilmore and Andy Berg, are you?
Andy Berg says yes.
Okay.
Herb Gilmore says yes.
And Chuck Demary says yes. Okay, and then the four. The construction of the dwelling shall comply with the order of conditions, um, DEP file number. Two eight six dash zero two seven eight issued by the. Chutesberry Conservation Commission dated July fifteen, twenty twenty and recorded with the Franklin County Registry of Deeds and Book. Seven five seven nine, comma page eighty-five, comma. As such order may be amended from time to time. I have no problem with that. Does anybody else have a problem with that?
This is Andy Berg. I like it. I think it shows um, that, you know. All of the different things which have been approved, so.
Okay.
I like it.
Herb Gilmore has no problem with it.
Okay, so we're unanimous on that. And the fifth one, Donna, can you suggest language or a, a, a fifth one about building it in accordance? With the plans as submitted in the application?
Yeah, my suggested language and, you know, Herb and Andy, you know, let me know if you have problems with it. Um, my suggested language is the construction will be substantially in compliance. With the site plan dated five seven twenty twenty and prepared by Jeff LeBeau PE.
You'll have to forgive me if I, if I spilled these wrong. I'm just going by uh, PE doesn't have a.
It might be, it might be somewhere else in the uh.
It is, it is earlier in the.
And it is correct.
Well, it's going to be E then, because LeBeau was spelled A and then on the bottom.
It's L E B E A U.
Yeah, it's kind of, yeah. There you go.
Okay, I, I like this.
I would put the construction of the dwelling will be substantially in compliance.
All right, good.
Is there a lot of changes in the site plan, um? This construction of the dwelling in preparation of the site?
He's like, yeah.
How about, how about preparation of the site?
Preparation, so it will be substantially in compliance with the site plan dated. Five twenty twenty and prepared by Jeff LeBeau, uh, PE.
Could I just interrupt for a sec?
Go ahead.
The, what was actually submitted, um, it's on the website. The most recent revision is June twenty-fifth. For the site plan, it's on the bottom left-hand corner of the plan.
June twenty fifth? June twenty, twenty twenty? Yeah.
June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. It's in the bottom left. And that's what's on your website.
So then we should probably change up here.
Yeah.
In, in this section right here. Is this site plan has a different date as well?
Yeah, there's multiple revisions. That's one of, that was the first.
That was the initial filing of the plan. I think that's correct to stay there.
Let's correct to stay there.
The five-seven is?
Yeah, that's the initial filing.
The only reason.
Yeah, but I don't think that that's, um, the building plans don't say the initial building plans.
Or you can put as amended, you could put as amended.
I would put.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, to as amended six-twenty-five, twenty.
Perfect.
And then, yeah, that should be fine.
Okay, let's. All right, so we've, we've looked at everything here and we have five conditions. Um, uh, uh, let me ask Herb Gilmore or Andy Berg, uh, if you think we should put any other conditions here. Besides these five. I think we have the overall. Then it's going to be. In compliance with all the other bylaws, which, you know, you know, the only real two that. We were concerned about is, you know, the town bylaws I'm talking about is, is the, the health by, the health board bylaws and the Conservation Commission bylaws and. So I don't know if we should mention that or we already really did that. It's probably overkill. So I'm, I'm okay with the whole thing.
I'm, I'm okay with the whole thing as written as well. I don't see any reason to put any other, uh, conditions on there.
This is Andy. I am, I, I, I think that, that we have an appropriate number of conditions with appropriate text.
Okay, asking my, uh, colleagues on the board, uh, whether or not, you know, we've gone through this line by line. Uh, i- is there any other discussion that needs to be had here? Any other statements, comments that we want to talk about? Or are we, we ready to, uh, call a vote?
I think we're ready to call a vote.
And, and this is Andy. I, I concur, um, very much that we, we, we should have a vote on this.
All right, so, all right. Uh, does anybody want to move, uh, to approve? Uh, this, uh, document, this special permit as now revised by the three of us, board members? Does anybody want to, uh, move to do that?
I move to do so. Herb Gilmore moves to do so.
All right, and, and, uh, Andy Berg, would you like to second this?
I will second that motion.
Okay, so let's go up, up where we have the three names. Okay.
Chuck, that wasn't a motion to grant the special permit. That was a motion to approve this document.
Okay, all right.
So let's make sure that, and I have no problem with that, given that it was, um, drafted by the applicant. I think that's an appropriate motion. But I don't think that's the motion to grant the special permit.
Okay, all right. Would you think we should have two separate motions?
Yeah, I think two would be really appropriate.
Okay, so, so first, a motion to approve the document. And we're not going to register the votes here because that's the special permit vote, right, Donna?
Right, that's right.
Okay, all right. So let's, let's just, as a side vote, um, all of us have had, looked at this exhaustively. Meeting after meeting after meeting from September, at least once every single month to date. And, and, and when there's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, uh, to approve the document. Uh, how do you vote, Andy Berg?
Andy Berg votes aye.
And how do you vote, Herb Gilmore?
Herb Gilmore votes aye.
How do you vote, Chuck Demary? Chuck Demary votes aye. So that's unanimous. The document is approved. Now, I'm going to ask for a separate motion. Uh, which is the motion to approve, uh, the, uh, special permit, uh, uh, as requested by the applicants. Someone, someone can make that motion.
I wonder, do we want to make a motion to approve the special permit as written?
That's good by me. Donna, you have any comments about?
Yeah, I think the case law is unbelievably clear. That the motion to grant a special permit needs to include the language in the bylaw. So I think that your motion, whenever you're granting a special permit under these circumstances, is that I move, um, to grant the special permit. And, and the, have the board find that the, um, construction will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current structure.
Okay.
Because you're back to your bylaw language as to why.
Let's, let's, I'm going to go to the, the appropriate section, which is, uh, uh, section. Well. Six, this is, this is an, um, article, well, it's an Article six, nonconformity of pre-existing uses in structures. Uh, within that, there's a section six point one, which is very specific about nonconforming uses in structures. And within that, there's a, a section six point one dash three extension or alteration. And, uh, the clause says this, and from this we could, uh, draft the appropriate motion. The zoning board of appeals may grant. A special permit to allow such reconstruction, extension, structural change, or major exterior alteration of a nonconforming structure. Or expansion of a nonconforming use, provided that the board finds. That such reconstruction, extension, structural change, major exterior alteration or expansion. Is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure or use. So that I've read that clause exactly. Um, does someone now want to make a motion? Uh, uh, to approve the special permit based on the, on that finding. That the zoning board of appeals of the town of Chutesberry unanimously finds that such reconstruction, extension, structural change, major. Exterior alteration or expansion is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure or use.
I'm moved.
Okay, uh.
I second that. Herb Gilmore says.
Okay, I, I'm going to, we have, we have a motion, we have a second. I'm going to call the vote. Andy Berg, how do you move on, on that? We have the language exactly there. And Tessa, you, that language is available to you. If you didn't understand my redundant reading of it over and over again. How do you, how do you vote, Andy Berg?
Andy Berg votes aye.
How do you vote, Herb Gilmore?
Herb Gilmore votes aye.
How do you vote, Chuck Demary? Chuck Demary votes aye. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. The special permit is, is granted. Um, let's, uh, you know, long last, um, uh, I, I, I am, Tessa, are you here?
So, so what I would like to do, if it's okay, I would like to take this document as we've written. I would like to send it to Tessa. I know Tessa has to do some. Electronic signing on your behalf, but I, I think that Tessa should be the one potentially doing that rather than, um, me. So I'm just going to send this to, send the document that we've written, um, to all of us, um, to Herb, to Chuck, to the Z B A email address and to me. And, um, you'll have that in just a moment. So if you'll bear with me, I'm going to stop sharing on my screen and I'll send this along momentarily.
And Tessa still is around, right?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so Tessa, you've been, I assume Tessa, you've been taking minutes of everything here?
Yes.
And you know that, and you know, uh, where I read redundantly this language. You have that.
Yeah, six point one dash three. Yep.
Okay, and you have that there perfectly, especially six point one dash three, section C. Okay. So I, I, I just want to authorize you, Tessa, uh, land use clerk of the zoning board of appeals of the town of Chutesberry to electronically. Uh, sign, uh, my name as the chair and, uh, and, and submit, uh, the, the date, today's date, March the third, twenty twenty-one. Um, and, um, and, and, and to do that, and then, and, and then to, uh, properly transmit. This document, uh, tomorrow morning to the town clerk. Okay, and, and for, for, for their appropriate action and, and, um, and, and please, uh, when you do that. And perhaps with the town clerk stamp on it, uh, if you could be so kind as to forward the, uh, signed document. To myself and to the, the rest of the board members, uh, to town council, uh, to, to attorney James Martin. Uh, and to the, uh, applicants and, and, and I don't know, and you can tell me about, uh, the abutters or not. I don't know about that part of it, but. Um, at least, at the very least, to the people I mentioned, okay?
Yeah, I can do that. And just to update the applicant, in case they're not aware, so the process from here will be. That I, and I am going into town hall tomorrow, so as long as the town clerk is also there, which by her hours she should be, um. I will take the decision. I will print it out. I will bring it to the town clerk, which will get a true copy, a signed copy from the town clerk. I will then, um, they will keep, the town clerk keeps the first copy that she signs. She makes a true copy for me. That gets mailed out to everybody. Um, so including in butters. And there's a twenty-one day appeal period. Starting that day. Um, and I can let you know if, if for some reason she's not there and I have to do it on Friday, but, um. But that, yeah, ideally will start tomorrow, um, twenty-one day appeal period. And then you'll be getting, then there's one more signature. So there's two spots for a signature from the town clerk on that decision and not. After that twenty-one day appeal period, there's a second signature from the town clerk.
Tessa, just to be clear, twenty-day appeal period.
Yeah, that's what we're asking.
Sorry.
Okay, and, and I say this to all the applicants, you, any, uh, building and, and, and site improvements between now and then, you do it at your own risk. So. Uh, be aware, uh, about that. Okay, um.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and Tessa, thank you very much for, uh, your diligent attention to this. Uh, you know, the applicants, uh. Are very grateful now that they can go forward with a continuing their family experience at this lake and having another generation enjoy it as well. So thank you very much.
And I, I want to, uh, thank you, James Martin, and you, uh, town council, Donna McNichol, for your, uh, in both of your invaluable assistance. Uh, uh, in, in terms of, uh, bringing the issues, uh, appropriately, uh, to the board. And I want to thank my other board members too. This has been a, probably the longest one I've been through, uh, you know, in my twenty-five-year-plus, uh, career on this board. So. It's remarkable. Thank you very much. We do, we do have some more agenda items. Uh, you all can stick around. One of them is, uh, I, I just want to bring it to the board's attention. Um, and, and, and I'll do that now, uh, under new business and, and, and I just want your thoughts. I don't want to take action, but. It's been brought to my attention quite strongly by the town clerk and, and, and to some extent by my land use clerk, Tessa. Uh, that, uh, there, there's going to be a move, uh, not allowing any of us. Uh, any, myself or you, Andy, or you, Herb, or Jeff Lacy to use any emails other than a designated email. And, uh. In other words, I can't use my private practice email. You can't use your, uh, you know, Gmail and Herb, I don't even know what you have. Do you have Gmail, Herb?
I have Gmail.
Gmail.
Okay, well, I, I think we're done, right? You're done.
Can I, uh, is your address, I, under your signature when you send an email? Is it pretty, is your address that I should email?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Okay.
Tessa, may I just confirm that you got the word document that I sent to?
That is a good point.
Just want to make sure everything's good.
Thank you, folks. Good night.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Megan. Thanks, everybody.
Be on Lake Drive.
Yes.
Here, now, I have, I have proposed that we all get, uh, Z B A emails, dedicated Z B A emails. Um, I actually even requested computers, but I think that that might be a stretch to get every town volunteer a computer. But, but the very least, and, and my, my opinion is if they're not going to allow us at some future date to use our personal emails. Uh, we should have a dedicated town email. And, and that's what I'm requesting and I've discussed this with appropriate people about that. And I'm willing to use that email and put it on my iPhone. I probably can't put it on my computer, but I can certainly put it on my iPhone. Which has the capacity to print right from my iPhone, which is kind of nice. I like that feature of my iPhone. So I'm willing to do that if the town. Uh, decides they're going to buy more email, uh, slots. I think there are fifty available and they might have to double. It's not just our boards, it's all the boards. No one's, they want no one to use it. So this is something in the future and I don't want to have a formal, a formal position of the Z B A. I want Jeff Lacy. Also to weigh in. So we'll, we'll table this too, but I just want you to know that it's, the discussion is, uh.
Yeah.
Okay.
For now, we can use our present emails.
It's definitely in the discussion phase. There's, um, concerns. Um, with continuity and with, uh, public record requests, which is why this has come up. But it, it's not, it's looking at options for how to approach it. Yeah, go ahead, town council. Thank you.
Yeah, um, I, I just want to point out that. It's been my recommendation for probably a decade. That you don't use your personal emails for, um, town business. As Tessa said, one of the reasons is public records requests are much more complex. If you have to go through personal emails rather than just having a dedicated town email, um, town business email. The other thing is what's called a litigation hold. And about ten years ago, there was a case where the, um, Supreme Court of the United States. Essentially said that when litigation is filed, that automatically, and now there's statutes in Massachusetts that requires. Um, public entities that are being sued or court private entities for that matter too, to essentially put a litigation hold on deletion of any. Documents, including electronic documents. Um, and so basically what I've been advising towns when I do public records request, record retention, um, little seminars. Is it's so much easier if you have a town dedicated email, um, whether that be a Z B A email, what, whatever. Because then if there's a litigation hold, they don't have the right to your personal computer. They don't have the right to go through your personal documents. Basically, you have a specific set of town documents. That's what they're entitled to. That's what you put on hold. Rather than your entire electronic history. So it, it really is a benefit to all of you to follow through on this. Um, and like Chuck said, you'll have a broader discussion later, but I, I want to strongly encourage you. To find, you know, some way to have a D B A email account. It's separate and distinct from your personal email, your personal records, um, because it's, I think it's important to protect you.
So, um, in the meantime though, and I, a practice that I've always done, uh, probably almost always. Is when I write emails to the two, to anybody on the board. Um, or to Tessa, well, obviously to Tessa, but I always copy the Z B A email. All, you know, there was, if you email me. Copy the Z B A email. So then there's, you know, at least we know it's there. Um, you know, I.
Well, that makes the public records request really easy. It doesn't necessarily go with the litigation hold, but it's great for the public record request.
So, you know. The only exception I have, I, when I, I don't do that, if I'm communicating with Donna.
Right.
About, about, uh, as legal counsel to the Z B A, I don't do that because that, you know, but, you know. But, but in terms of, in my communication to the two of you or my communication with the public. Uh, or anybody else that has to do with Z B A business, I, I, you know, I'm communicating with. Jones and Smith and whoever else, I, I copy to the Z B A. So it's all there, you know, and so I, I, I almost always do that. And, and if we all can do that. Um, you, when you're just communicating with me, have it there. So no one, so it's, it's clear. It's all in one place. Okay?
I'll guess.
All right, and hopefully we'll, go ahead, go ahead.
I was always going to say, I mean, you know, I, I, I think I don't really, I don't really communicate outside of the threads that we started, but I always make sure the Z B A is on there too. Um, you know, but, but I will say as somebody who works with litigation holds on occasion in my professional life. The electronic ones are really much easier if you have something discreet that you can look at. It's just a much better situation. So. I, I think that any way that we, we have, you know, once Jeff comes back of really encouraging the town to go that way. It would be a real relief for, for, for a, a number of us. I would feel much more comfortable. I mean, I, I think I, I get rid of that by, by not really sending. Any emails except, you know, that, that, you know, um, that I can meet at a certain time and date. Um, but, but that, that really makes it, um, it's, it's a good situation for everybody to have those e- extra emails.
And, and Andy, since you're the youngster here. And Andy, since you're the youngster here, you, you at some point maybe cheer and maybe sooner than, rather than later. I mean, then you do communicate more with, with other boards and the public and applicants and you know, and your members, of course, just to organize meetings and all of that and to make sure people are reading this and that to prepare for the meeting, site inspections and all of that. So so prepare. Andy, by the way, how long have you been on the board? I'm just curious, including your services.
It's an alternate. I've been here probably, I don't know, five years. I was an alternate for maybe three or four years, something like that.
Five years or so, is that?
Five years or so, something like that, yeah.
Okay. All right. So that's new business. Anybody else have any other new business?
Done with me? You done with me?
Thank you, Donna.
Thanks, Donna.
Very, very wonderful and any
Excellent job.
Everything. Thank you, Donna.
Thanks, Donna.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, here we are again. Do we have any old business or new business? Do we have anybody here for education and guidance? Katie, Karen, are you here for educational guidance? Hearing none? Okay, any old business?
Always curious to hear what you guys come up with. Love these stories.
All right, you, you don't, you don't want to be educated or guided, Katie?
Oh, this is all educational.
Okay, very good. All right, any old business or new business? Beyond what we've said, okay.
Or is looking for alternate members, right?
Yeah, Katie, you want to, want to join?
Oh, I wish the chat were here.
Okay, I mean, again, we are looking for another alternate. And, and by the way, I, I, I just think, you know, as to new business or old business, depending how you want to look at it, we have began the discussion of, I think we should continue with this discussion about whether or not we as the zoning board of appeals wants to recommend a bylaw change in our bylaws. Several, but one being that this is a five person board. I mean, I, I think we should deliberate about that and talk about that and, and make a recommendation about that. And we should do it in a formal way by motion. You know, obviously when Jeff's here, and obviously the problem with that, of course, is we have to have five members. So we have to find another member. You know, but it would certainly solve some problems in my opinion. Go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, no, I mean, because I think that would also be, you know, I, I think I forgot who would make some of that, that, so we would probably recommend it and the select board would approve it.
It's a town, yeah.
It's a town meeting, it's a town meeting thing, yeah.
Yeah, if we recommend it, then it's a town, it's our recommendation, it's a town meeting. You know, and the other thing I, I think we need to do is, is, is the bylaw that caused this whole problem is we, we need to think about amending that language too, especially when something is built in the footprint, but it doesn't go out. You know, I think that should be a matter of right. And I, I, I really do. I don't think it should be a special permit.
I, I, I tend to feel that the same way. And, and I, I think that there's, I don't know, I, I, I think that would, because I think one of the things that's hard is that there's enough ambiguity that the the, the people don't know what to, to really expect. That it's been in some ways a flip of the coin. And, and that's not how it should be, that this is not, you know, that, that this really should be, you know, a ministerial function to approve things like this.
Yeah, yeah.
It should be, it should be transparent enough that somebody can read it and understand that they are complying or not, and whether they need to have a special permit or not. I think it's so confusing the way it's written that it's not clear.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with flagging it. You know, because there are, I can imagine certain circumstances. If it went out three or four feet each on each side, I, okay. But if it's not going out at all and it's within the height, I, I just don't think it should be a debate, you know. I really don't. Because I, I, I think that's exactly what the Ballanta case says. That debate is off the table.
You know, because I think the hard thing that I sort of see is, is right, you know, our height limits are already somewhat limited, right? You know, so you can't go up to 170 feet. You can go up to, you know, 28 feet. This is, you know, and that's what sort of you need if you're gonna have a, a two story, you know, Cape style house or two, any sort of, you know, most two story houses, you end up at right around that mark. And, and, but, but, but the, the other thing that I want to avoid is additional hardship for the town in terms of legal fees. I want to avoid additional hardship for the town and, and hardship for the applicants in terms of legal fees, you know, going up to it, to, you know, to, no 1,200 foot square foot house should require that the applicants hire at their own considerable expense an attorney.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. I think someday the judicial court is going to be even more explicit about these kinds of cases. I think they'd strike it down to my, in my opinion. There's an unconstitutional application of a, of a bylaw. That's what I think is gonna happen. We'll see. We'll see. But I think we should do it ourselves before the Supreme Court does it for ours. But anyway, we'll have that discussion with Jeff. Again, I have no problem with flagging, but we can just add one more sentence. Insofar as it doesn't go above the heights or extend it, it's a matter of right. That's all we have to do. And, 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 yeah, and that's it. And then, you know, if, if, and then you go right to the building inspector and get it. And Ballanta says that, actually. That's the debate in the Ballanta case, when you have it as a matter of right or a special, or a special permit.
You also talked about substantial detriment to the neighborhood and you don't define that anywhere.
Well, we
It would be good to define that. So if, if it's going to obstruct a view, it should be defined in, in, in a hard way, what that obstruction of view means.
The courts have been very clear about, about minimal obstructions. Don't do it. It's very clear. All the decisions are very clear about minimal, 10%, 20%. You know, it, it's very clear that, that, that doesn't do it. It's gotta be like much bigger than that, much louder. Substantial means
I just, I guess I never saw, I never saw those definitions in the zoning bylaws. Where do those exist?
It's in the case law. That's where it is.
Where you find the definition of quote unquote substantial that you used in the previous.
Yeah, you can find, the court's parcel, it's a case by case analysis. And there are literally hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands of zoning cases. And, and the jurisprudence of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Supreme Judicial Court of the Appeals Court, or the, or the, or the trial court decisions. And then even tens of thousands more in the United States and they
But you never referenced them during these hearings.
Yes, so I certainly did. I had the definitions and I cited them over and over and over again from the law dictionary.
Interesting, in the recordings I have, you don't.
I said, I, I use the word considerable, large. You'll see those, you'll see those everywhere. And we had case laws going, we, we were exchanging cases all over the place. We were all reading cases. And, and, and that's certainly in, in the, as part of, could be a part of our record. So that's what it is.
Should happen at the beginning of the process, not at the end.
I agree with you, hundred percent, hundred percent. But it didn't. So so that's where we are. But that's another story.
And there was a lot of memory recollection during this process, whereas if there are notes taken, the note should be referenced. We should rely on fact, not, not human memory. Lot, lot of room for error there.
Yep, but that's what juries do every day.
Well, I thought that was maybe part of this process too, facts.
Yeah, some judges allow juries to take notes and some judges don't.
Well, I think, I mean, we've got someone taking notes.
No, 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 yeah, yeah.
It's all part of this process.
Yeah, right, exactly. Tessa is taking notes.
So if it's not in the notes, then maybe it shouldn't be artificially recalled.
No, that's not, that's not how it works. It works, the trial court, just so you know, for education and guidance, the trial court can look at these cases de novo. That means they'll consider what we did. They will look at the minutes. They will look at all the recordings, but you know, that's just one piece of the evidence is this, as far as they're concerned. They
Why are these meetings recorded? That way, that way
They are recorded. They are recorded. It is recorded.
Are they posted for the public?
Everything, the executive session can be, can be
The recordings are?
Except for the executive session can be accessed by contacting the town clerk.
Yep. So if you want to go through
Okay, so they're not posted, you have to make a request for them?
Yes, yes. The recordings, for the most part, there, that a few, yeah, ZBA recordings are by request.
Yeah, and it's probably
I just know that Chuck had tried to reference a quote unquote true facts, and I, I don't know what other kinds of facts there are. And he was pretty sure that his, his, his recollection was 95% correct.
Yeah, that's all I could get.
But it would be good if it was 100% correct.
No, no, I, 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 I am infallible. I will never say 100% ever under any circumstance. And no, while I say 0% under any circumstance, I just don't say it ever, ever, ever. Because I, the best I can do is 99, somewhere between 1% and 99%. That's the best I can do is to recollect any fact.
Yeah, I just, I just thought if maybe you were referencing a transcript or something, then
Yeah, I, I, my, my memory was 90, 95% accurate. And that's, that's what I, I, you know, I might've said 50%, I could've said 10%.
That's pretty good. Kudos, kudos, Chuck.
Well, I've been living with it for a long time with this case.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That doesn't deteriorate with age.
Well, no, I, I, I probably 20 years ago, I would've said 99% accurate.
Also, I'm so sorry, I've gotta go at some point. I'm gonna get to give make a motion for adjourn, please. I'm so sorry to interrupt, but I will make a motion to adjourn and we'll see how it goes.
Is there a second?
Oh, Herb, I think you're muted.
You're muted, Herb.
I know, I still second that motion.
Okay, all the favors say aye.
Andy Berg says aye.
Chuck Demare says aye. We are adjourned. Time is eight thirty nine, I believe.
Good night, everybody. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Tessa.
Yep, take care.